Meeting, coming on order. This is the regular conference of the city council as incorporating annual meetings notice of 2014 which is filed in the city clerk's office and posted on the bulletin board on September 27, 2013, sent to the Star Ledger Home News Tribune, all in compliance with provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law of New Jersey. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Perkins Agassi.
I'm here.
Councilman Questa.
Here.
Councilman Torres.
Here.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilman Keenan.
Here.
Councilman Sedano.
Here.
Councilman Gorman.
Here.
Councilman Maza.
Here.
President.
Here. Nine members present. Anyone from the audience who should address city council, please say yes for now.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I come before you there because back, I believe it was January 24th in the Star Ledger, comedians Jay Black and Joe Piscopo decided, you know, they want to take shots at the city of Elizabeth with some, you know, disparaging statements they made about, you know, exit 13, but the most, the one incident that I'm particularly appalled about is ESPN commentator Sal Palantonio, his remarks on a nationally syndicated radio station yesterday where he was, he questioned, he was questioning why Coach Fox of them Broncos brought the team from Jersey City to Elizabeth, and then he went on to say how Elizabeth was smogged and polluted, and then he caught himself and then he doubled down on it, and then he wanted to retract what he said, but me, call me patriotic, or, you know, if someone who just loves the city, I was really offended. I mean, I had to pull over, and I just couldn't believe what I was hearing, so I would hope that this city council as a body would write a letter to ESPN, the commentator expressing, you know, this approval of what comments disparaging remarks he said, because this was on a nationally syndicated radio station, and he did mention the city of Elizabeth, and he was questioning why Coach Fox took the team out of a beautiful hotel, as if to say that we don't have beautiful hotels over here, and brought them over to the city of Elizabeth, and he said some disparaging things, but, you know, me as a resident, I was really appalled and offended by his comments, and this is not the first time Sal Palantonio has said some disparaging things, so I will hope that the city council as a body sends a letter condemning his, you know, disparaging statements. Also, some time ago, Councilman Torres had an issue about the safety concerns outside of school 52. Now, as a parent, I'm concerned also because last Friday, as you well know, a truck ran a red light and hit a motor vehicle just prior, minutes prior to school being let out. If the kids hadn't been out, the situation could have been, you know, more severe, so I'm hoping that the city council picked up, or Councilman Torres's initial recommendation when he wanted a traffic cop there down there by the senior building, if possible, because God forbid, you know, if it's a kid walking across the street and something happens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Palantonio.
What, Mr. Carey, what day was that program on?
It came out yesterday. Actually, I was traveling, actually, I was returning from the community food maker hillside.
What time of day was it?
This was around 12:00.
Okay. Anyone else who should address city council? Yes, sir.
I'm from the city. I wonder if the honorable city council has any information on how the honorable Republican Governor Christie shut down the George Washington Bridge due to a breach that was caused by the Democrats.
Anyone else who should address city council? See none, I'll close that portion of the meeting.
Letter dated January 28, 2014, from Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to Comcert Reuters Division West Publishing Corp., Eagan, Minnesota. I'm always ready to say Minneapolis. For the purchase of web-based data access services for the law department and municipal court division for the period January 1, 2014, June 30, 2014, at a cost not to exceed $20,000.
Any questions?
Letter dated January 29, 2014, from Business Administrator, requesting authorization for the proper city officials enter into an agreement with the county of Union Department of Human Services, Division of Youth Services, and accept a grant award for the Union County Life Watch Supervision Program under the Juvenile Justice Commission, points of continuum, yeah, continuum disposition for the period January 1, 2014 through December 31, 2014, in the amount of $11,000.
That's our portion?
Yes.
Want to be able to question? This is part of the curfew program.
Correct. Letter dated January 29, 2014, from the Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to Northeast Auto and Truck Parts LLC, Division of Capital Supply, Inc., Bayonne, New Jersey, for the purchase of oil and motor parts and accessories for the Department of Public Works, for the period January 25, 2014 through February 25, 2014, at a cost not to exceed $50,000. Letter dated January 30, 2014, from the Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to La Vos Elizabeth for publishing of advertising for a period of one year from the date of award, in an amount not to exceed $30,000. Letter dated January 31, from 2014, from Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to W.D. Mason Company, Inc., Secaucus, New Jersey, for the purchase of office supplies, toner cartridges for printers and fax machines, through the Somerset County Co-op, for the period January 25, 2014 through March 31, 2014, at a cost not to exceed $25,000. Letter dated February 4, 2014, from the Business Administrator, requesting to amend the resolutions dated August 27, 2013, and October 22, 2013, authorizing the Elizabeth Fifth Development Company to administer an on-the-job training and placement program in partnership with Elizabeth Port Presbyterian Center, specifically to remove any reference to the Retail Skills Center as an administrator of the program, as well as amend the period of the contract to February 12, 2014 through February 11, 2015.
So we don't send people to retail skills anymore?
Oh, we do still send people to the Retail Skills Center, and they do still receive an allotment of community development block grant dollars. This, initially, EDC did not have the personnel to handle the on-the-job training program, but they have since been able to allocate additional personnel, so they would be administering just the on-the-job training grant. Retail Skills Center will still be a part of our overall collective program for job placement for our residents, but not through this county grant.
So this wasn't an error, this was just a change?
Yeah, initially, we had gotten the grant, EDC had been experiencing a bit of work overload and was unable to do it, so we attempted to amend it in October to include the Retail Skills Center, but since then, they have been able to reallocate duties of the staff, and it'll be solely, and also, but the primary thing is also extending the time to February of next year.
All right, so let me just get this through. This money used to go to Retail Skills Center in the years past?
No, it has only been allocated for the, yes, it was only allocated from October.
First time.
Correct.
Letter dated February 4, 2014, from the Business Administrator, recommending that city council consider rejecting the sole bid received from Tri-State Maritime Safety Association, Camden, New Jersey, for shipboard firefighter training and authorize the purchasing agent to re-advertise for same with revised specification.
I'm just going to go back this way, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So if I have a gentleman that comes to my office and says, "I want to get a job," do I tell him to go take his resume to Retail Skills Center or TDC?
Both. Both places.
So we've got two places placing people jobs?
Correct.
What's the difference between one and the other?
The on-the-job training program at EDC is industry-specific, so they've been focusing on the hospitality industry, as well as working with our industrial partners, warehousing, et cetera. The Retail Skills Center, primary purpose is the mall area and those.
Those stores and that retail.
Correct. And then also, the on-the-job training has specific economic requirements for individuals that the Retail Skills Center does it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Letter dated February 3, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer advising that additional grants may be appropriated in the 2014 state fiscal year budget-by-budget amendments, Chapter 159. Letter dated February 4, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer advising that in compliance with the State Fiscal Year 2014 Appropriations Act, your honorable body approve all payments related to accumulated uncompensated absence benefits.
Yes, sir.
The last time I can get the list for this.
There were none.
There were none.
There were none.
This is a part of the best practices where we need, in the event, so in the event, there are some, they will be attached at the meeting on the 11th.
Sir, you must be interested.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I think I'm referring to the same information that was probably requested by the second ward, I also request a separate attachment, we never got the attachment, I requested, and still as of today, I never got a copy of the attachment pertaining to the.
It's because there wasn't anybody that retired in the timeframe of the last meeting. When they, when they do retire, when it's meeting-specific, they'll be attached, but I'll, yeah, so there hasn't been anybody in that meeting.
So that attachment, that was supposed to be there, that was supposed to be a blank attachment.
Correct.
Hopefully, you'll be seeing names. Letter dated February 4, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer advising that in compliance with the State Fiscal Year 2012 Appropriations Act requires that the honorable body approve a finance committee that can provide an efficient means to represent the governing body by performing in-depth research, plans, and reviews in fiscal areas such as audit, budget, and accounting workflow rules, as well as evaluating vendor, professional, and labor contracts.
Who's going to be on the panel?
Well, we need a recommendation from your governing body with regards to a representative. Discussions were had with the CFO and myself that an at-large member might make the most sense, but that is for you guys to decide and nominate.
So who makes up the committee?
If you go, it'll be myself, Tony Z, Jill McDonough, and then a member of council.
Four people.
Correct.
Who breaks the tie? Councilman Questa, Councilwoman Patricia Perkins Agassi, one of you two guys want to be on this?
I'm not sure, Mr. President, I'm already part of the other committee, and they meet regularly, I don't know how often this committee will meet, do you know, how often the meetings will be?
I would imagine quarterly.
That's not bad, so I don't know, I defer to the councilwoman, but.
I do. This way you got two women on there.
Three.
Yeah, you have two women.
Three?
Oh, you'll have three, you guys will have, you'll have 75 percent. All right, so Councilwoman Patricia Perkins Agassi will be our appointee to the finance committee.
Great.
Letter dated February 4, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer, recommending that the city council hereby request the Director of the Division of Local Finance to make the following changes in the 2014 municipal budget to account for the city's share of grants approved subsequent to the adopted budget. Matching funds, city share from $973,068 to $653,068. Local share, preserve Union County from $0 to $300,000. Elizabeth Public Library from $0 to $20,000. Letter dated February 4, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer, request a sewer utility bond ordinance to finance various sewer capital projects as part of a long-range plan to upgrade the city's aging sewer utility infrastructure in the amount not to exceed $12 million.
Bridget, we had a whole conversation with Tony about.
About paying down these bonds, and we're all going to die in 2015 because there wasn't enough money to clog the holes, and we're bonding more money. So could we get an idea of what this is going to cost us, another $14 million?
You got it, yes.
How much it costs?
Van J E I T?
No. When you got to pay on capital projects.
We're relaxed.
Our brain's gone dead, it's already.
We're taking a nap.
No, it's 12 hours.
So we're going to get a bucket, you requesting a copy of the projects?
We're going to take a nap.
So if we can find out, number one, like the councilman has asked, what is this money going for if we've got some specific projects in mind? And number two, what is the carrying cost for this project on a yearly basis?
Yep. I'll get that too.
So county fees are extensive, and we've been told that we need to raise money, that it just, maybe these projects aren't as important, I'm just.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And just so that, you know, we don't get the information.
Absolutely.
Letter dated February 14, from Chief Financial Officer advising that your honorable body may request it to consider the cancellation of sewer utility capital ordinances no longer deemed required.
Can we find out how much?
Yep. 12 million.
Maybe there's some in there.
Yeah.
Maybe there's enough in there to cover the other thing.
I'll get similar details from both regarding what capital for projects, how much is being canceled, and what projects.
Thank you.
Letter dated February 4, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer, request the city council
consider the approval of a supplemental bond ordinance in the additional amount of $1,500,000 for the construction of a new firehouse for Engine Company Number Six, 472 Catherine Street. Original bond ordinance was in the amount of $3,200,000 with authorized obligations of $3,400,000 with a down payment of $160,000. Said supplemental bond ordinance would increase authorized obligations of $1,425,000 with a down payment of $75,000, raising the amount to $4,700,000.
Councilman, this is very important. Is this going to expedite, is there anything we can do to expedite so we can get this project going for this?
Yes, and the additional costs were as a result of a meeting that we had had with the fire chief and the key personnel of the administration at the fire department.
It's cheaper to build new than.
It's cheaper to build new, plus it also, we're trying adequately to fill their storage needs, because as we all know, we're.
That place is small.
Correct, so modernizes it, secures it, and adds additional storage space.
How quickly are they going to put shell on the ground?
That's what I want.
It's my understanding that they're working as quickly as possible, I mean, of course, certainly have the money identified, but the architect is on retainer and is in design phases, so I can also get you an idea about the timeline for the next meeting.
Please, please.
The councilman is really interested.
Yes, very interested.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. That's great.
Letter dated January 27, 2014, from the Director of Health and Human Services, requesting permission to apply, accept, and sign all appropriate documents necessary for the continuation of the Elizabeth Municipal Alliance to support and promote drug and alcohol prevention programs throughout the city for the period of July 1, 2014 to June 30, 2014, for $75,854 in grant funds requiring a 25 percent cash match and a 75 percent in.
Mr. President? Yes, sir. Any question about that? Oh, I'm sorry. Elizabeth Municipal Alliance used to be funded by confiscated drugs. Is that still a case?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, but this allows us to apply to the funds, yes, additional funds, and then, yes.
Okay.
So it allows us to apply for additional funds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Got your answer, council?
Yes, thank you.
Hold on.
Municipal Alliance.
It comes by way of a grant from the state to the county.
This comes from the grant from the state, and then we also use confiscated forfeiture funds also to help supplement other parts of the program.
I know the majority of it comes through, because you always have to put that tag on it.
Right.
Farms new fund.
By the county. But other components of the program come from the forfeiture funds.
Mr. President, and furthermore, through the alliance, we also use some money to have a project graduation for our senior members, but I suppose.
Okay. Good point. Yeah? Next.
Letter dated January 28, 2014, from the Director of Health and Human Services, requesting to enter into an agreement between the city of Elizabeth Department of Health and Human Services and Borough Kennelworth Health Department for services rendered at the Union County TB Reactor Clinic in Elizabeth for a sum not to exceed $90 per patient visit and an administration fee of $70 payable upon receipt of a report of a confirmed medical service.
They weren't part of the original?
No, they were admitted.
They were admitted. We missed the minister. Thought everybody was in there.
Charge of all, you know, they come late.
They don't want the entrepreneurial disease.
Letter dated January 29, 2014, from the Acting Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute an agreement of the Elizabeth Coalition to house the homeless located at 118 Division Street, Elizabeth, to provide funds for rapid rehousing rental assistance to prevent homelessness for the period July 1, 2014, they have me at 13 to June 30, 2014.
Is that right?
In the amount of $9,096.
That's good.
Is that $9,096?
Yes.
Is that right, that we're going all the way back to July 1st?
Yes, because that's their contract year, and we're reprogramming dollars that were left in the community development read, rapid read.
Well, they need it now.
Yes.
Letter dated February 3, 2014, from the Acting Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization to reprogram Elizabeth Development Company's project balances to Shalom Hope Cares Project for $177,419.99 and to extend to December 31, 2014.
President, what do you do with all this money?
I don't know.
These are existing, these are existing programs that had been allocated through our community development block grant fundings that have not come to fruition for various reasons, so we're reprogramming these dollars as a result of a requirement from HUD to cover certain costs, and they're with regards to the Shalom Hope Project that is happening right off of the highway, so there'll be, there'll be affordable housing units, there'll be a community development center, and some other program.
And what? Housing project on the highway.
What about?
The one that got burnt down?
Yeah, this is the one that had burned down several years ago, that's a result of.
So you're using the money that hasn't been used in a couple of these other projects?
Right, right.
So it'd be appropriate.
Correct.
Okay.
That's the one that you didn't charge?
Next.
Letter dated January 27, 2014, from the Director of Public Works, requesting permission to have liens placed against properties listed on Schedule A attached, here due to the boarding of said properties in the amount of $1,794.33.
Any questions?
Letter dated February 3, 2014, from the Director of Public Works, recommending awarding a contract to Joseph D'Angoli and Son, Inc., Lawrenceville, New Jersey, to provide construction management services in connection with the construction of Engine Company Number Six, located at 472 Catherine Street, at a cost not to exceed $284,307 plus reimbursable.
Any questions? We're on.
Same, same firehouse.
Hey, the same firehouse, we just got to get going, that's all. Put a shell in the ground.
There you go.
Enough talking already.
Letter dated February 3, 2014, from the Director of Public Works, recommending awarding a contract to Netta Architects, Mountainside, New Jersey, to provide professional architectural services in connection with the Design and Construction Administration of Engine Company Number Six, located at 472 Catherine Street, at a cost not to exceed $372,000 plus reimbursable. Letter dated February 3, 2014, from the Director of Public Works, recommending awarding a contract to Hatchmont McDonald, Island, New Jersey, to provide design and engineering services during the construction phase for the Progress Street Area Flood Control Project on a lump sum and time and material basis, at a cost not to exceed $467,000 plus reimbursable.
Where's Progress Street? This is over by you.
This is where we work at, right off of, down avenue.
So where that tire places?
Yes.
There's a big problem there, huh?
This'll help alleviate that.
My 18-wheelers are underwater, you know there's a big problem.
Letter dated February 3, 2014, from the Director of Public Works, recommending awarding a contract to Hatchmont McDonald, Island, New Jersey, to provide design and engineering services in connection with the Trumble Street Flood Control Project Phase Two on a lump sum basis, at a cost not to exceed $198,000 plus reimbursable.
I wouldn't, I can't get that in the second ward.
Listen, the Philbrook Council hard work.
Letter dated February 3, 2014, from the Director of Public Works, recommending awarding a contract to Johnson, Mir Moran, and Thompson, Inc., Trenton, New Jersey, to provide design and engineering services of emergency generators at police headquarters, Peters Town Community Center, and Stephen Sampson Senior Center on a lump sum basis, at a cost not to exceed $154,600 plus reimbursable.
Mr. President? Just a question, when I originally talked about this, we had included the Mickey Walker section? Because it didn't read why we don't have it.
These are the, these are the top three priorities as far as public safety, as you know, we're using the Sampson Center for emergency shelter, and then the Peters Town Community Center, also with regards to our public health nurses and the medications that are kept there. So we have, we received a hazardous mitigation notification from the state for $639,000, this is just one portion, us getting, starting it and getting.
So I was going to say, it's not going to cost us $639,000 for these three places?
No.
What about all the other centers?
Well, we have a list of prioritization that we submitted, when we submitted our list to the state, it was actually about 2.4 million, we got 639. These were the top three priorities, but there's about, I believe, five other projects which I can get to you.
Our claimant is really fair, and also, not every time.
Yep, but these were the, from a public health, public safety, and community shelter, the priorities.
Sixth ward of all.
They have a minute, Ben.
Well, listen, guys, I hope, I hope you guys.
Business Administrator.
Talking to the Polish home.
Listen, you got a soccer field.
We need to, we really need to work on, take care of Urb Slaven and Miller Evans Logan.
Yes.
And, you're welcome.
Well, listen, I understand this is a priority, if you understand, we're doing it as prioritized, I think.
We understand that.
They're all for it.
But you know what? When the Sandy hits again, everything's going to be a priority.
We'll work on that.
Well, I'm working on it right now.
It's not going to be a state Sampson Center, it's going to be a Miller Evans and all them, Peters Town.
Waterfront is a priority.
Yes, I will certainly communicate that and get back to you.
Bayway is a priority.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. President.
After we sit down next to you.
Just need a crumb, I'm not asking too much.
We're open to bids for the pool this.
We'll discuss the rest.
I know Mickey Walker may not be a priority.
Of course.
Absolutely.
Okay, but waterfront, you know, last year, that you'll have the Sampson Center right next door, so you got, you got a place to go in that.
Yeah, but I understand, there's two phases with Mickey Walker's conjunction.
I know that, but I'm just saying, in the second phase, since you already have the Sampson Center next to Mickey Walker covered.
Yeah, but it's.
It's fed the wealth, you know?
We are.
And while we're doing this, can you write a letter to the housing authority, find out what they're doing with regards. Find out what they're doing with regard to the senior buildings. I know that the Farley Towers went under. I know that we lost power at the Chris Village senior building there. So, you know, it's not just us taking care of centers, we gotta take care of seniors too.
Mr. President, I'm glad you brought that up. I brought it to your attention also. I met with Bill Jones and other members of the staff, you know, when I became president, about that whole scenario. So, they were supposed to be working on it. I don't know how far they've gotten now. But you're right, do a follow-up and see how far they've gotten. Because they definitely, they're upgraded.
We have a commissioner from the Housing Authority right here.
Oh, okay, well...
Yeah, I just wanted to say, they have budgeted to do two facilities at this point for generators and we're gonna be looking to do the rest of them.
Do you know what you're doing?
I believe it was Farley Towers. Probably was one of them.
We'll just find out.
Sure.
What their priority list looks like.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
What about private, real buildings, like 740 West Graves is a private, real building? And I don't know if they've got...
The city, really, we can't force them.
No, 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 but it's worth a phone call.
We can make inquiries.
Yeah, because I'm sure from a public safety perspective, it would be helpful for police and fire to know whether or not any provisions have been...
Set up for backup.
Yeah.
And Councilman Keenan, what was?
740 West Graves Street.
Okay. Oh, yeah.
Anything else? Colleagues?
That's it. Let's get them done, done.
Letter dated February 4, 2014 from the Director of Public Works. Requesting that your honorable body consider adopting a resolution making Ordinance Number 4448 entitled "An Ordinance Granting an Approachment Permit to Penn Ave Urban Renewal LLC, North New Jersey for Occupying the Public Right-of-Way at 715 733 Pennsylvania Avenue effective immediately to the protection of the health, safety, and welfare of the public upon final adoption and signature by the mayor."
So, this final vote will be Tuesday. Bridget, can you see if the mayor will be in on Wednesday so he can sign this?
Yes, well, I guess we can figure out Wednesday is Lincoln's birthday, which is a municipal holiday. But I will find out what we can do to get the mayor's...
It does. The cost that this development is costing per day is crazy. Well, if it is, it is, but if...
Well, certainly, I'll check in and make sure what we can do to have documents prepared and ready. On the next day, and I'll commit to your body that I'll go get... Yes. I just wanna stop here.
And Councilman Mazza has submitted a memorial for Domenico, just said...
We also have a memorial?
Claude Reed Treblow, he was a 13-year-old boy who committed suicide. His family's actually from Elizabeth.
All right, what's around? Councilman Torres, what's around?
Yes, Mr. President. As Mr. Carey stood up earlier and spoke, this is gonna be my second request. I know Trumbull Street and First around School 52, it's a difficult situation because you have a school there, you have commercial, you have... Yeah, so, I asked John Chapin for signs. Apparently, they ordered some polls in November. We're in February and they still haven't come in yet. So, I asked for some signage, you know, basically, you know, children, school area, 25 miles per hour. But can we find out why the signs haven't come in or the polls?
Yes, and we did have a discussion at our director's meeting this morning that was initiated by Director Garlick with the police director about reaching out to our colleagues on the school board to come up with a more cohesive plan for safety of children being dropped off at schools, especially now with the snow and corners, it gets a little tough. So, hopefully, we'll be able to come back to you in a few weeks or so with a comprehensive plan for statewide school safety. But without a doubt, I will inquire specifically to these polls and signage.
That's it, Mr. President. Councilman Keenan?
Yeah, I just wanna commend the Director of Public Works and the Public Works Department and the crew that shelters the ploughs. They've done a standing job, not only in the Third Ward, but particularly go from the town to the guard's vault. And they've always got two trucks out and the streets have been cleared, they've done a great job.
Nothing to complain about. Mayor of New York's got issues dealing with it. Councilman Goldman? Councilman Mazza?
Yeah, Mr. President, I'd like to echo the sentiment and the wording of the Third Ward Council pertaining to our Public Works group. They did a super job. And furthermore, I have a name of a gentleman which may be close to 100. And I like to, I will give his name tomorrow, Yolanda, with the information I email you, so... And that's it.
Yeah, one, maybe quickly. Mr. President, as you know, we recently discussed the contract with Regional Industries. And I remember Councilman Stenning brought up the same question on a switch meeting. Now, my understanding is Elizabeth will continue to be given priority. So, my question is, what does that mean? Because last pickup time in the Third Ward, last Wednesday, was really late. So, what do we mean by Elizabeth will be given priority in this contract?
The recycling?
Yes.
It was supposed to only be picked up by 1:00 o'clock, is what I was told?
I will, I will talk...
Okay, I think it was picked up at 1:30 or so, which is not that bad. But usually, it's a lot earlier than that.
Well, they used to pick it up at 5:00 o'clock in the morning.
Yes, my question is...
We also got a lot of complaints, at least I did, neighbors that would make a lot of noise and buses were stopped, were preventing them from doing what they had to do, so...
5:00 o'clock in the morning, to me, I don't need that. But 8:00 or 9:00 o'clock in the morning, I mean, the only reason I'm questioning this is because we were told that Elizabeth would continue to get priority. And I wanna know what that means. Because if it's 1:30 or 2:00, then I don't think that's priority.
Mr. President? Yeah, the thing that's good about an early pickup is if it misses a block, you've got time enough in the day to get them to come back. If it's late in the day, that's it, it's gonna sit overnight. But a priority, I would like to know the list of clients that are served. In other words, is Elizabeth...
Who gets picked up on Wednesday before us?
Okay.
Right, right, exactly. Thank you, Mr. President.
That's the answer. That's the question, right?
The workers told us that they had to do Jersey City or something in Hudson County.
Right, so we need to find out, are they going to Jersey City first on Wednesday?
Well, pursuant to conversations with executives of Regional Industries, their contract actually for Jersey City is a night pickup, so they start later in the evening. It's not a daylight hour pickup. But I will certainly ask Director Public Works as well as myself, reach out to Regional and get something in writing.
Okay. Councilman today?
Just wanna see if I could submit to Yolanda, this is like the list we have submitted for P S E G.
Oh, give it to me. I got a folder? I forgot to ask for that. We're meeting, they sent us a, called Yolanda, and apologized but because of this ice storm tonight, they were getting their troops in order to combat any possible power shortages and whatnot, so they couldn't be here tonight. But we gave them three other dates, the next three pre-council meetings. And so, what I did, I sent, and he also sent me this package, which I'll have to read. That's what they're gonna cover. What I'm gonna ask all of you is if you do keep adding up lists of lights that are out, double poles, addresses, poll numbers. Because when we get here, I'd like to give them a nice present.
The lists I submitted are all double poles.
These are double poles?
Yeah, I didn't specify that. The only thing, other thing I wanted to bring up, I don't know what the current status of our auxiliary police is for the city. I know I had the chance to speak with Councilman Quest a little bit about it. But I'm just curious if that needs to be something that we really look at as a potential of increasing the program? Because that could also, like, for example, I know Councilman Torres brought up the concern of that particular intersection. Instead of having like a regular police officer in that corner, an auxiliary officer could...
Patrol car.
A patrol car could solve pretty much that issue. And I know of a couple of other situations too, instead of tying up a police officer in the corner, auxiliary police will be excellent. So, I just don't know, Bridget, if you know...
I guess the question is, how many do we have?
Yeah.
I'll find out, I don't know, honestly, but I will certainly...
At one point, we said like 15 or 16.
I will certainly speak to Director Cosgrove and ideally get you guys a report as soon as possible, if not before...
And we don't provide them with health insurance either?
No. So, I will, so I'll find out and get a report of the status and the availability and hopefully you can provide it.
I just think that it's something that would be such a blessing to our city because so many times you see police officers in corners managing traffic when they could be on so many different other calls. But thank you, Bridget, that's it, Mr. President.
Mr. President, could I be shared?
Oh, yeah, no, I'll speak to Director Cosgrove, ask for a report and get it back to you as soon as possible. Ideally, within a week or two, if not by the end of the month.
Can you find out while you're doing that, what would be the cost for us to provide them with health insurance? Because we, I think that was one of the reasons why it's starting to dwindle. They used to get health insurance and we pulled it away from them because they were not... They're all, they're all... But I mean, but if it's gonna, it might be cheaper than to hire more cops.
We tried to...
And I know we did.
Tried to screw down the budget, so gotta be careful, gentlemen.
Now, it's just gonna, I just don't feel so it's really like visible, promoted. Because I've had a couple of people approach me, they're like, they would love, interested in it and just don't even know if it really exists.
I'll certainly find out the process.
Is that it, eh, Councilman?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd also like to thank Public Works because they've done a great job in the Second Ward, in the streets. They've shot throughout the whole city. So, I'd like to thank Public Works and the Director of Petty, the job that they're doing and all their crew.
Bridget, I want to ask, I know we did a retirement survey. Do we have any, do you have anything you can share with us?
Not at this point in time. I know, no is the short answer, but as soon as I, as soon as I speak to Mr. Zengaro and get a compilation of information, I will share it with you.
You're not beginning to ask the status of the Polish home?
The status of the Polish home is that there were conversations with the executive director on Friday afternoon. Rocco has been having conversations with regards to their attorney. We do have an agreed upon price. There is an environmental report. So, once they review the environmental report and okay, we should be moving ahead with the closing within the foreseeable near future.
We did a phase one, we have to do a phase two now, just to be sure.
Environment?
Yes. But we owned the property where the Polish home was before we sold it.
It seemed like a nominal, it seemed like a minimal amount. You know, supposedly, you see, I mean, I don't wanna quote numbers, but it seemed fairly low compared to some of the cleanup costs and numbers that we've seen. So, ideally, Kezanicki, right, I spoke to Mr. Kezanicki on Thursday and Friday. So, hopefully, we'll be coming forward with a resolution soon to move on that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman, you want to say something? I just wanna, I just wanna make two statements real quick. Number one, if you don't know, we have been asked to use our City Council chambers by the Board of Ed. You all should have a copy of my response, Yolanda and I put together. You'll have that. And like I said, with P S E G, anybody's got any double poles or lights that are out? Yeah, I got a little folder that says, P S E G. A little gift for these guys. All right, guys, motion to adjourn.